Already making to support energy security, energy price stability, you know, and particularly in light of the experiences that we've all had over the last couple of years with very high prices and, you know, serious insecurity in our energy supplies. But there's also additional benefits that people are really beginning to recognize, particularly in the context of, you know, frankly, the abject failure to make progress on reduction of emissions to date. There's a recognition that what we actually need to support decarbonization, but in a way that enables continued operation of the global economy without emissions, we need to substitute energy services currently being provided by fossil fuels. And nuclear energy is a really interesting option to do that because it has a tiny environmental footprint. It has a very high capacity factor, which means it operates at 90% of the time. And it can produce not only power, but also heat without emissions. And we'll hear in a moment, I'm sure, from my dear colleague about a very, you know, pioneering project to provide heat and power to an existing industrial energy user. But through terra praxis, what we've been seeing is, you know, really astonishing level of interest from large industrial energy users, global technology companies, oil and gas companies, steel, chemicals, and in the marine sector that are at the point now in their investment cycle where they're looking at how they're going to meet their 2030 targets. And every single one of them are looking at nuclear energy to support their decarbonization goals, but in a way that meets their business drivers. So matching the cost and performance that's currently provided by fossil fuels with new emissions-free energy services from nuclear technologies. Now, we have a long way to go for the nuclear industry to actually respond to that demand in a meaningful way. But we're working on strategies to achieve that. So we have this interesting opportunity right now to really accelerate the commercialization of nuclear technologies. And we can learn a lot from the success that we've seen in the renewable space, which enjoyed, you know, very strong support and advocacy from policymakers, from the environmental community, from leaders like yourselves that understood the potential to change the delivery of solar and wind from being something that was expensive and slow and vertically integrated and frankly niche into something which could be really commodified as a highly competitive, scalable, and transformative solution for our energy and decarbonization needs. Let's apply that same success, successful strategies to the acceleration of commercialization of nuclear.
Thank you. I was, another thing that we keep on mind, and I was, we were chatting, and I was saying that when looking into the energy segments, we go onto nuclear, we go onto solar, to wind, to fossil fuels. And then when taking in consideration nuclear, one other thing that gets to us is within the development is that the time that it takes to be constructed and then the costs. It starts at one cost and the sensation we have from a Brazilian perspective, we are still with our ANGRA III to be built. And it goes on and it goes on. And it hasn't finished yet. So I will start with asking to you, Cosmin, and then asking for some complimentation from Cam. If you could share a bit on this time and this budget, how is it been changing over time? Can we expect it to be in the lower time to?
Sure. Let me start with drawing a parallel, right? Right now, we're talking about two types of nuclear. Traditional nuclear that has basically, it's probably 70% construction and maintenance. And each particular step of it is fully regulated and observed by the regulator. If I were to draw a parallel, think about going to one of those old school English-style tailors that look at every part of your body to try to fit that particular suit for you. And it takes time. And it takes rework. And you cannot make sure that you have it available that particular day. However, we have fast fashion that's coming out now. And you have very good suits that are being produced at very good quality, but they're in series. Now, if I were to draw a parallel, the SMRs will probably be the fast fashion of nuclear in the sense that 80 to 90% of them will be pre-constructed. And this is due to advancements in manufacturing techniques. Because now you can do military-grade, you can do nuclear-grade components that will be prefabricated and assembled on site. Now, this obviously imposes a huge challenge to regulators as they will need to look at how do they work with supply chains, which become the most important aspect of the development, to be able to make sure that all of these particular quality assurance manuals and so on are at par and they're okay with it. From my perspective, I think that the average construction time period of an S M R can be half of that of a regular reactor. So moving from six to seven years to probably three and a half to four. The licensing, now this is where it's going to take a little bit of time for the first of a kinds as you tailor the design to a grid need. But then if you keep the design the same, you automatically replicate it. And it becomes a very, very smooth and easy-to-permit process. And as you can see, even in the EU, if we're looking at the Net Zero Industry Act and the recent evolutions of that, they are setting themselves, we are setting ourselves up for success through an accelerated permitted system. So the real benefits will be the fleet deployment. And at that point, you enhance supply chains. Now, if I'm to draw a parallel with a similar revolution that happened probably 12 years ago in the solar and renewable industry, we can see the first panels in solar and renewable installations of being a little bit high in terms of cost per megawatt. If I remember correctly, around 2012, a solar panel, a solar farm was trading around, in Romania at least, around 1 million, no, around 6 million euros per megawatt installed. And now it's below 1 million. How did it happen? Well, it took 12 years of deployment of scale and public funding to accelerate the development of supply chain and lower the cost of that particular technology. The same thing will need to happen with nuclear. And actually with all technologies, to be honest, if we want to achieve full decarbonization. And I'm not sure we've seen all the technologies yet that are needed. And we're not talking about them that are needed to achieve full decarbonization. So here is where we're going to have public-private partnerships that will have to move forward. And it's a new development model. And this is one of the points where governments, regulators, for example, can work with certification organizations to develop, to achieve that. You're going to have reactor vendors and designers that will be working with construction companies and private funds together with government to try to accelerate deployments. So there are a number of lessons to be learned. And there's a change from the fully, how do I call it, sovereign model, which has been the norm in nuclear. And it's an interesting and transformative change. But that also requires a lot of understanding and openness and trust building. So it's an exercise that at the end of the day will help reform societies, but build trust and bridges, not only between countries. We're seeing most of these being multinational efforts, but within country, between various sectors that will be there. So at the end of the day, it's a new philosophy with a topic that's been highly sensitive. It hasn't been discussed very much in the public openness. And it will require a lot of reform for itself. But I'm very, I think that we have good practices in other areas that can be easily replicated. And we can achieve that.
Thank you very much. And with that, I'll pass to Mr. Cam. I think we could go a bit, a step back in terms, I don't know if all the audience, and I'm still a learner, I would love to understand. When we're talking about the small modular reactors, and we do need more knowledge within broad knowledge in terms of it, regulation support and policies, could you bring us a bit, so on the regulation side, on the policies and about it, and how this technology can really reframe now the energy transition in terms of new energies being built?
Sure, thank you so much. Yeah, so if I just go back a little bit and sort of zoom out for a second and look at the problem that our planet is facing, our world is facing. There's a huge need for carbon reduction. I mean, we know that. Where if we don't do that, I think our civilization is doomed. We've got to make that happen. At the same time, the energy need is increasing. So you've got two forces, right, that work in opposite direction. And the energy need that is increasing is increasing dramatically around the world. Population growth, you know, also the energy need per capita, the industrial requirement for energy, all of that is increasing. And one thing that's happened recently maybe, and especially within the last years, the last year, is the energy need of AI and data centers. I mean, that has completely changed the game. I mean, the amount of power these data centers need. I mean, I was just talking to a hyperscaler recently at their conference. And they're going to need like 10 gigawatt of power by 2030. And, you know, so all the energy formulas that we've been thinking about, we've got to throw out of the door and sort of say, how are we going to meet the energy need? So when you sort of look at it and you say, okay, then if we're not going to use the fossil fuel, of course, we need renewables. But how are we going to solve the problem? Then you come to this solution, okay, nuclear. Now, if you come to sort of solution on nuclear, then you talked about the perceptions, right, of nuclear and all of that. That's why X Energy was formed in 2009. I mean, I'm personally space cadet. My companies are in space. But I did this because I wanted to really combine altruism with capitalism, make a difference, right? And so this is the reason for what I call the Generation Four nuclear reactors, right? The founding principles that I came up with for X Energy were four: clean, safe, secure, affordable. Energy solution that's 100% clean. And as the gentleman indicated, my first idea was hydrogen. And I realized that the hydrogen economy is not viable without a heating source that make it economically viable. And that's how I turned into nuclear. And so also it has to be, so the Generation Four nuclear reactors, X Energy XC100, is 100% safe. And that, and when I say safe, I don't mean by some electronic intervention that, you know, if you lose cooling, then, you know, you get super critical, like it happened in Chernobyl or Fukushima. No matter what happens, they're intrinsically safe. That's the XC100 reactors. Doesn't matter whether it's an earthquake or if there is a tsunami, you know. So that's why I think the perception is changing. And also secure, so that it cannot be.
Just, I think that it's interesting for the audience to know, when you mean safe, like, because what happens? Tell me if it's that. We had like the enrichment of the uranium. It goes on happening. But now, when you're talking about these new technologies, if something happens and it goes out of control, it stops the enrichment?
Not the enrichment. What happened is the, actually, the feedstock to our fuel is high S A L U, the enrichment that's up to 20%. That goes inside the fuel. And so if, let's say, you lose cooling, and by the way, this all 100% been tested. So what I'm saying is not just the hypothesis is it's been tested 100% proven. So if you lose cooling, like what happened, the same Fukushima, the temperature goes up a little bit. And then it automatically comes down. So that it would never go to a supercritical situation where you have radiation leak and dangers. So that's why it's 100% intrinsically safe. And the physics is not by electronics, it's by physics itself. That's why this is fundamental. Holy Grail in nuclear is safety. And we've solved that problem. 100% proven, you know, de-risked. And today, actually, Chinese are operating a pebble bed modular reactor, Generation Four, even though it's not a small modular reactor, it's high. That sort of proves that this technology actually de-risked and it actually works. And then the last piece is something that is affordable, right? So you can compete with natural gas. And we're really fortunate that we have created this partnership with the US government. So US government is actually in a private-public partnership is our partner. We want to, we are very fortunate to win a $2.5 billion grant. It's a 50-50 cost share with US government. And now we got a customer with, we're very proud to have Dow Chemical as our first customer. We're building the first plant in Cedar Rift, Texas. So you have this partnership that I think you discussed, where you have the US government, you have a technology provider, a vendor like X Energy, and working with a customer. And actually, this is interesting. 25% of the world energy today is industrial needs, right? And what HTGR, the technologies like X Energy provides, is because of the high temperature they generate, is really perfect for hydrogen production, for water desalinization, for cement factories, for petrochemical companies. As well as, as he indicated, what we actually do is we, it doesn't require water for cooling. The modules can be carried in the back of a truck, back of a train. And you can deploy it anywhere. You can literally have one of our SMRs in the middle of a data center or in the middle of a city and doesn't require as much footprint to be able to do that. And then one last item that I want to say is because of the need of amount of power that the world needs, we need to completely think differently. We can no longer go with sort of one-off scenario. We need to be able to scale this like you create cars. So our idea is you have, we will have factories where you sort of create the modules like Legos. You take it to the site and you assemble it. And you have fuel factories around the globe that actually feed the reactors.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mianaga, I was listening to you in the room as well and want something interesting from Mitsubishi's perspective. So when moving forward, we are mainly, we started saying in Japan, in the US, but definitely for the developing countries, this can also be an interesting alternative. And if we really move forward and with the right policy in place and competitive price, this could be something interesting. If you could explore a bit of this in terms of how could, with the right price, being competitive, how could it help? And for which uses?
Yes.
That's your thought?
I think the, yes, the small modular reactor, yes. For example, it is a very, yes, a kind of the breakthrough technology for the near future. Because of the, I think the, with such kind of the concept, the modular design is a very standard. And also small means the, small modular means the, I think, as you have said, the, yes, the prefabrication at the factory as much as possible. And then the cost and quality will become more, much more reliable. And then the easy to manufacture, produce. But I think for the very gigantic the conventional reactor, we have established expertise and skill. But we need to maintain a very high-quality engineering level and workmanship and so on. But I think it is necessary for the future development too, like the nuclear fusion and others, that kind of large-scale reactor will remain as a very important facility. But I think for other, yes, common, the popular use, maybe there will be some near in the future. I think prefabrication as much as possible. And that means the site work will be reduced very much. And not only the quantity, the volume of the site work is reduced, the difficulty is again, because very high rising and big, it's heavy machinery installation requires a lot of difficult foundations and installation techniques. But the distributed, small, a little bit compact design, small modular reactor will ease a lot of site work. That is the, not only the cost of the labor, but also time duration will become, and we can expect that kind of the benefits. And the capital expenditure will be reduced. And I think with the common design, I think we can expect another, yes, cost reduction. So, and looking at the current station and the energy cost, with the renewables, when we look at the capital expenditure, of course, compared to the wind turbine, onshore wind turbine, of course, the nuclear is much more expensive. But I think it lasts much longer. And also the offshore wind farm is more expensive. And then if we use such electricity to produce hydrogen for some purposes, and then I think such kind of total energy cost and T and D, transmission and distribution network cost we require. So I think the other whole, the energy cost is rising. And looking at such kind of the current station and the future costs and the price station by other, yes, renewables and other sources, the nuclear competitiveness will not be, yes, deteriorate. I think probably I can expect we can make it more competitive in terms of the cost and also in terms of the construction cost and the capital expenditure cost. And the further to say, the fuel itself. Because if we enrich a little more and we can expect a longer continuous operation and in the future, by doing so, the operation will become very stable. And the cost expectancy will not be, we cannot be concerned about the future oil and gas or the other kind of the demand and supply. Yes, energy cost, the operation of the fuel and cost and other kind of concerns. So I think the new nuclear will provide us a very good opportunity to be a basic, very reliable, stable energy source.
Thank you. With that, Christie, thinking of all these things that are going ahead, if you had to line up here, top challenges, risks being evaluated, how could we, looking at where we are now to bring this alive in terms of being something feasible and achievable for many countries? What are the main challenges and risks?
Yeah, so obviously, the technology readiness is absolutely key. And we've heard about the importance of technology demonstration. And that's underway now. I mean, we have many demonstration projects underway, including X Energy and also including some of the microreactors, which are very interesting. Those are the reactors that can, you know, be made in factories today, mass-produced, at scale, licensed in the factory. And we'll see demonstrations of those technologies starting to operate as soon as 2026. So that really is a timeframe that could be relevant to the 2030 targets that we were talking about a moment ago. But in addition to that, to achieve the speed to market, to achieve the scale of deployment that's needed, to achieve the cost and the performance requirements that are going to be needed to meet the industrial energy users' requirements, we're going to need to see significant investments in standing up supply chains. Now, organizations like MHI, as well as, you know, other large manufacturing companies that are already building high-quality, high-performance, highly-regulated, you know, infrastructure, could absolutely be building infrastructure for nuclear technologies as well. So this isn't all, you know, starting from new. It's really about transferring existing industrial capabilities to meet this need. In addition, we'll need a licensing pathway that's really commercially viable. And we've been working with a group of oil and gas companies in the United States interested in deploying microreactors to support decarbonization of their upstream operations. We identified 50 gigawatts of existing generating assets of between 1 to 5 megawatts, so tiny, 50 gigawatts of existing generating assets that they're interested in decarbonizing with microreactors. So we took that to the regulator in the United States. And, you know, we're feeling cautiously optimistic that it would be achievable to develop a commercially viable licensing pathway to enable, you know, the decarbonization of those assets through a commercially viable licensing pathway that would enable rapid delivery from decision to generating asset. So licensing is really key. But there's ways in which it's not just sort of, you know, regulatory reform and the regulators coming to the table, which is really critical. It's also designing out regulatory scope. It's also about reducing as much as possible the nuclear island. We're seeing examples of separation of the nuclear heat island from the power island, which just overall reduces the regulatory scope, the regulatory oversight needed all the way through from design engineering to manufacturing or construction and then operation. There's also licensing innovations or design innovations that can enable standardization, which means that you might license once, but then be able to build many, many, many. And then we're going to need to see collaboration internationally between regulators to enable, you know, proven, demonstrated technologies to be deployed into multiple markets.
What are the companies that you think that would be the first adopters, the segments that would be the first adopters?
So Microsoft published a policy briefing at COP28, recognizing the role of nuclear energy alongside renewables to support the decarbonization of their operations. And they're interested in accelerating the commercialization of nuclear technologies through, you know, direct investments, signing P P As, policy advocacy. So certainly the data center sector that has tens of gigawatts of demand in the 2030 timeframe and needs highly reliable, emissions-free energy. I mean, 99.999% at the gigawatt scale. But then also oil and gas is really interested in decarbonizing oil production to enable continued access to resources in future, continued license to operate. And then we're seeing the marine sector as well. The IMO finally last year set targets for 2050 decarbonization with gates along the way, starting in 2030. And the marine sector is also very interested[1668.84] And the marine sector is also very interested in accessing energy services for, from nuclear energy.
Thank you. Because I mean, one part that we haven't tackled yet, and this is a perception, but I think it's been changing as well, is relative to the waste. So we've mentioned here, scaling up, the investment needed to scale this up, the regulation, that these are small reactors, so it's a lot safer. But then with the waste, what could you bring to us in terms of?
Let me start with the first thing. The waste produced by nuclear energy in terms of footprint per megawatt produced is the smallest amount of waste out of all energy production forms. And I've had the opportunity in my brief career to see multiple forms of electricity production. Supplementary to that, it's probably one of the big, most regulated industries in terms of management of waste. So currently, I would say that this is probably one of the safest areas to look at. However, and this is, would be the point that I'd like to put into, is that with less production and the newer technologies that we're seeing have a probability of smaller waste footprint, but we're looking at advanced reactors as well. So right after these SMRs that we're talking about that are, you know, using conventional technology scaled down the size, we are looking at advanced reactors that could potentially be waste burners, or we can see reprocessing of nuclear waste in, to be able to have closed-end cycles. And a lot of the advanced Generation Four technologies that will be the next step afterwards are looking at that. So in Europe at least, we're looking, a lot of the countries are looking at treating waste as a resource. So I know there's a debate around proliferation in other places, but with the advancements in technologies that we're seeing today, a lot of the old, of the concerns around recycling are going away because there's more and more solutions that are coming out there that are proliferation-proof and also help you achieve more energy production without necessarily having a waste footprint. So at the end of the day, when you're going to have an energy system mapped out, probably in, by 2050, as everyone's planning, there's a goal by 2032, 2035, and one by 2050, when you look in the long term, you will see mixed technologies that will help complement and close the fuel cycle. And in that sense, you can actually have zero, if not close to, if close to zero, if not zero, footprint. So the idea is when you're going to start looking at deploying these type of technologies, the outlook needs to be very, very long. I know that the outlook that we're looking at right now has to do with the repayment of the financial structures that are being put in, which is probably 15 to 20 years after commissioning of a nuclear facility. But a nuclear facility operates AD, can go all the way up to 80 years.
Wow.
So the commitment is a century-long commitment. Therefore, the view and the plan that everybody needs to implement is a 100-year plan. And that's basically probably the number one piece, step that every government or entity that wants to get into this or region has to look at a 100-year plan.
That will hopefully change, right? When we have a situation where we have manufactured reactors being made at scale, it's all about de-risking investment and not necessarily requiring that very, very long payback time. Really, the fundamental de-risking that's needed is around confidence for budget and schedule and ultimately cost. And once we achieve those very low costs and that confidence around budget and schedule, then there's going to be a massive investment opportunity that doesn't necessarily rely even on those very long operating lives.
Yeah, but you'll want to, you want to depreciate your technology as much as possible.
As soon as possible, yeah.
So you want to, if you want to have true gains, probably with CapEx being the highest cost line in the cost structure of a particular nuclear reactor and the resulted levelized cost of electricity, once you depreciate it, how do you say, you know, what you have afterwards is gravy? So having a long-term use case makes a lot of sense.
Do you, Mr. Ken, want to add up to this?
Yeah, I mean, like in our case, I agree with her that, I think we need different kind of thinking. And to be honest, if you sort of look at X Energy, in many ways, we sort of follow the SpaceX model, that we want it to be very expansive, disruptive in terms of technology and find a different way where we can solve this problem. So not only we want it to be disruptive from technology perspective, also from our business model perspective. So finding a government partner that helps you with your first-of-a-kind cost, I mean, just think about it, if somebody came and said, hey, I'm going to give you $2 billion and I don't require any IP and you get no dilution, that's a pretty good deal, right? And also providing maybe additional tax credit, like in the United States with the Inflation Reduction Act, I mean, that's really helped us a great deal. We feel like we're going to be extremely profitable business in a very short period once we get past our first-of-a-kind, which very close to do that. And by the way, the other thing we're doing is, we're probably, I think, the maybe the only company in the world that not only producing nuclear reactors and microreactors, we also provide fuel for the nuclear reactors. Like as he indicated, a life, a nuclear reactor is 60 to 80 years. So think of it like selling printer cartridges. So I think fuel business by itself could be extremely profitable as well. And let me just, let me just share this, which I think is really important as I started in 2009, the company. Creating a nuclear business on a commercial front is not easy. Let's just, let's just put that out there. Since I'm in space, I tell people that it's easier to land a rover on Mars than really start a nuclear plants and build it from scratch. And the reason is, I think there are three bubbles that need to work together very closely and integrated, and if they're not, it's not going to work. So first is the technology, you've got to have the right technological solution, otherwise it's not going to work. I think the second bubble is regulatory, right? So if you, if you design the most elegant reactor ever and you can get it licensed, you haven't accomplished anything. Now, let's say that you have now come up with an incredible design and you can get it licensed, but it's not economically viable in terms of kilowatt per hour, people aren't going to use it, right? If, as much as we have this need for decarbonization. So economic viability, the regulatory and technology, I think that all needs to be working together to make this happen. And I think that, that requires, I believe, a different kind of thinking rather than traditional nuklears, where it takes long time to produce. And I think one of the key things is standardization, because you don't want to go back to regulator every time you put a new one in. So the way we're doing ours, we have a four-pack that is standardized, we're going to get licensed for this, and every time we sell it, that's what we're going to sell, like a box that has been already licensed, so we can repeat it over and over and over again.
Thank you so much. We are in like 50 minutes to end. I think that we've got a very interesting perspective here in terms of, it's much safer than what we had the perception before. Technology is already there, we still need to speed it up and for that, we will need economical viability. And to achieve this economical viability, we need some support, we need some skins in the beginning, but then bringing it along, we will have like long-term cycles, reliable energy, and that will be able to be used not only by developing developed countries, but developing countries and for several uses, industrial uses, data centers. So with that, I think we are ending up, but I'd very much like to thank you panelists for this and for the audience to be here with us today.